Good morning. I want to call the meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners for Deschutes County on September 21, 2022. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for joining us today. I don't believe we have any people in person that want to make any public comments at this time. I don't see anything written, nothing, Sarah. Okay, I do want-
Acknowledge our AOC-
Oh, yes, well-
Director, Gina-
Yes. Thank you, Gina, for coming today. I believe we all have private meetings with you today, so that will be adding to our schedule. And then the good news is we have our meeting Friday in Madras for our regional, for our district. So from, I think, what is it, 10 to 2? Okay, great.
And good morning, Mallory. Thank you for joining us. So kind of one of our policy folks.
Yes, Mallory, how'd you get so lucky?
Well, I know you've been all around the state, so right now is the time to get out and about. So thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Okay, I do have, we do have some public comments from our community. Someone sent in a phone message concerned with their charge of $1,900 for search and rescue for going four tenths of a mile. So thank you for that. They left their phone number. And then because of the article in the Source magazine, I believe it was, a week ago, we have 65 letters in support of maintaining Whorrell Wayside Park right outside our door. So, yes, 65 letters. And as the lone vote that has wanted to save the park from the very start, I was happy to read those letters. So thank you very much.
So I responded personally to about the first 20-something of them, and then they just kept coming, so I couldn't keep track of that. But what I have responded to is that we are going to, we are doing an analysis again of the parking, the parking needs, the possibilities of the future. And I think it's a shame, some people think that we're going to just wipe that whole thing off and pave it into blacktop, and that's not the intention. I've always acknowledged that it is a geological feature. There's a natural volcanic or, you know, natural feature out there. And the idea was to make it smaller and add parking. So as I say, I feel bad that people are responding to something that probably isn't the vision of, that I was even advocating for. So it's going to come back around at some point in the next, I don't know how long.
The next few weeks is our-
Oh, good.
-back to the board and provide an update, so.
There's a 25th anniversary celebration, I think, this weekend out there-
Yes.
-for that, too. So I'll stop by and I'll let them know. I mean, we are not here to pave the whole thing. I'm just speaking as one commissioner, but it's got a life of its own.
I'm working on a pretty extensive written response that has a little bit of summary information, but then a whole bunch of details, myself, which addresses some of the same points. We're doing a downtown parking analysis right now. If we need to create additional parking spots, we will, Whorrell Park is our best, most cost-effective option. And it'll result in a reconfiguration of the park, not an elimination of the park.
And we have purchased another building in the downtown campus area with a couple parking spots. I mean, we're trying. But yeah, it'll come back around.
And of course, I had a different opinion. Let's build a two-story parking lot on our flat lot and maybe put condos on the top floor. It might be a lot more money, but do we not need workforce housing in Deschutes County? So I would love to see something like that happen in the future and not taking out something that's been here for 75,000 years. So anyway, we all have a different opinion, and it's, that's why we're in government, because we have different opinions. So anyway.
I just wanted to mention on the other citizen input item, you mentioned, I put the, put that caller in contact with Tom Coon. You know, since Tom is our point person for the ambulance servants area, I thought he might be an appropriate person to discuss what that, what that constituent's options were. And so he had a, he had a discussion with her, and I think it's, we've given her all the information that, that we can and done everything within our power to address that situation.
Great. Now, I thought that they didn't charge people if, let's say, they were up on South Sisters and they ran out of water and they had to be rescued, that we don't charge people? So-
I don't think it was a search, it was not a search and rescue. It was a kind of routine ambulance run. The constituent was concerned because it was such a short distance-
Yes.
And it costs-
Quarter of a mile?
But-
Four tenths.
But to mobilize an ambulance with, you know, a couple of paramedics and, you know, all the equipment to kind of keep somebody alive, if you arrive and they're in cardiac arrest or something else, it does cost money. So.
All right. Thank you very much. We're now, I believe, to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move approval of consent agenda.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So first action item, number seven.
No. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kim Riley, Assistant Legal Counsel. The county received a petition from Ingrid Brydolph to annex her property into the Sisters Camp Sherman Rural Fire Protection District. Annexation of property into a fire district is a fairly routine request whereby state law requires that the commission hold a public hearing and then make a decision regarding the annexation. The fire district has approved the petition and the appropriate county departments and offices have certified and reviewed this petition. As such, we are requesting the commission move approval of Order 2022-048, declaring annexation of the subject property.
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
My only question about this would be, the Sisters Camp Sherman Rural Fire Protection District is supportive of this annexation?
That's correct. They have approved it.
And her property is actually on Wilt Road. So, okay, that makes sense. Do we have any other discussion?
Public hearing.
Do we need to open the public hearing then?
Yes.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would care to testify on this petition to annex property to Camp Sherman from Wilt Road, Sisters Camp Sherman Rural Fire Protection District? There's no one in the room to testify? Okay. We will then close the public hearing.
Do you want to check on Zoom?
Is there anyone on Zoom, Stephanie? No, of course not.
Box has been checked.
I know. It's like, well, I don't see any Zoom people out there. No one raised their hand. Okay, thank you. So therefore, we'll close the public hearing. And is there discussion on this order?
It's a great thing for people to be joining the Rural Fire Protection District, especially in a, in an area like that, north and a little east of Sisters.
Okay, all right. And the petition is attached. Okay, could we have a motion then?
I'll move approval of Order 2022-048.
And I'll second it.
Now, do we have any further discussion? None? Seeing none. Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you, Kim. Thank you for being at the front chair today. It's nice to have you here.
Nice to be here.
And now we need Dan Emerson. Dan, I see you on Zoom.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Would you like to explain the policy implications?
Yeah, so this is, before the board today is Resolution Number 2022-063. We are just increasing appropriations for debt service today. It's kind of a two-part resolution. The first part is we realized that our full faith and credit obligation Series 2021, as we were going through the year-end process, we realized that it was not fully budgeted within our adopted budget. So we are making sure that those appropriations match our actual debt amortization schedule there, which in this case meant that we put $48,770 within the Fair and Expo Center for appropriation there, $55,673 within the RV Park, and an additional $200,781 within solid waste for that full faith and credit obligation Series 2021. In addition to that, in this resolution, I think the Commissioners know, we recently went out to bid on, or auction on the bond for the Nagus Waste Transfer Station project. And of course, there are some cost of issuance there as well. And that total amount is $211,849 for that bond for the Nagus Transfer Station there. And it's broken out, $116,668 for the general cost of issuance, advising and taking out to bid, and then $95,180 for the actual underwriting of the bond issue. And so in this case, we're just increasing appropriations to cover our debt schedule and to cover the new cost of issuance, lowering contingency in those funds.
Okay. Thank you, Dan, for that explanation.
Yeah, I support this. It's good to see us kind of dialing into the actuals as we did that debt issuance and, you know, follow on from our adopted budget. So I'm supportive. I'll move approval of the Resolution 2022-063, increasing appropriations within the 2223 Deschutes County budget.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Dan.
Dan, it's, I mean, it's not a, it's not necessary to know this for, to be squaring up our numbers, but do you, could you tell us these, these debts, what kinds of projects at the fair and the RV Park they're associated with?
Yeah, I can, I'll need to look into that a little bit more. We cover a lot of full faith and credit. But the 2021 issue specifically was for general county buildings and maintenance. I also believe that it was for the radio system and facilities, and that was covered, I believe, in the adopted budget. But I think what was missed were specific, probably building maintenance. And I'm happy to email the board with exactly what those were, if you'd like.
That's all right. I mean, well, if it, if it, if it's really quick, I'd be curious, but it, you know, it's definitely not necessary.
I'd be interested in the detail.
Sure, of course. All right. Well, then I will send that follow-up to you as well.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Dan. Okay, item number nine, Eric.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Eric Krop, Deschutes County Risk Manager this morning. This item is a workers' comp TPA contract. What we're looking for is, is board signature of a notice of intent to award TPA contract to TriStar. And I'll, I'll give some background. Deschutes County does, is self-insured for its workers' comp program. We hire a third-party administrator that, that manages our claims. We currently have a contract with TriStar. The contract expires November of this year, so we went out with an RFP. Sarah Key, who will be joining me shortly, she's our loss prevention coordinator. She did a bulk of the work for this RFP. Three companies responded to the RFP. One of them was deemed not responsive because they just bid a piece of the claims administration, not the, not the full, full range of duties for the claim administration, so they were deemed non-responsive. The other two companies were TriStar, which is the incumbent, and Gallagher Basset. There was a three-person panel that reviewed and scored the applications. That panel included myself, Sarah, and Tim Clark. Tim Clark, Clark works for Brown and Brown Insurance Services and is our insurance agent of record. So they actually purchase insurance on behalf of the county. The criteria used to score the applications included looking at costs and fees, the team assigned to the claims, audit performance history, and the content of the proposal. Based on the score, TriStar came out on top. Companies were encouraged to offer different types of pricing. The table on the staff report shows the different options. We, in terms of determining how much each option costs, we had to assume a certain number of claims. So we process about 53 workers' comp claims per year. So we use, use that as a baseline to then, then project the costs. And the costs range from a low, flat annual fee of $45,000 to a high of about $85,000. Staff deemed the flat annual fee to be the best value for the county. All three raters had TriStar as, as the top company. And we are here to recommend TriStar as the county's, to continue as the county's third-party administrator. And so, or seeking for is, is chair signature on the intent to award the contract. Once that is, if that is done, the intent to award letter will go to all three bidders. There's a seven-day protest period. And then if no protest is filed, the contract will be awarded administratively. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I guess my only question. So we've worked with TriStar previously, and do you have any feedback or, you know, kind of assessment of, of how it's been working with them over the last few years?
Yes, yes. They've been a very good company. We're, we're happy with them. Before, they were, they were actually bought up, bought up, or TriStar bought a company called Matrix that, that had been our TPA. With that transition, we extended the contract one additional year because we wanted to see how the new company, TriStar, would perform, and they performed well. With, with these type of services, it's, they're really large companies that tend to be located out of state, and then they have, they'll have an office in Oregon as they're required to. They'll have a, a claims team that really is kind of the key to, to the, to the performance. And TriStar has been, has been a good performer.
And did the people who were part of Matrix kind of roll over to TriStar?
Yes.
And so like, the people we're working with have, have stayed pretty consistent?
Yes, yes. It's a very small universe. So the, the people that process these claims tend to go from a couple of different companies, but it's, it's been consistent.
We're ahead of schedule. Thanks for joining us.
I texted her, but it wasn't much time.
Would you like to identify yourself?
I'm Sarah Key, Loss Prevention Coordinator with Risk Management.
And thank you. We heard you did most of the work. You were given credit for that.
I had a lot of help from a number of sources.
Okay, all right.
One question. Can you explain the options choices? So when I look at the three options from TriStar?
Yes, yes.
How does that get calc, you know, it's like, well, let's just take the lowest, but what does that really mean? I don't know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain the three different options. There's two types of workers' comp claims. There's medical only. That's when an employee is, is injured, but they don't miss work time. And then there's claims that are indemnity, indemnity, and that is, is employees who are, are injured and have time loss or time away from work. So those are two main types of claims. On TriStar, option number one, the perclaim pricing breaks out, has a price for, for each of those two categories. And then the blended pricing just has one price for any claim, regardless of indemnity or medical only. And then the flat annual fee is not a perclaim price. It's just, you know, a, a flat fee. And then the Gallagher Basset Option 1 and 2, those are a bit confusing. The life of partnership is they handle the claim as long as we contract with them. And then the handle to conclusion is they would keep the claim even if we switched providers down the road and had a different contractor. So it's a little bit of a, a different scenario. And we did ask for different types of pricing options. So that's why we see five different options here. Anything to add, Sarah?
No.
Okay.
And it is for a three-year contract, then, with what?
Yeah.
Two, two-year extensions.
Yes, yes. What we're seeking is we'd have a three-year contract, and then it'd be at the county's option for two, two-year extensions. And that works out well because that helps us lock in price increases. But if the company is not performing, we have the option to go back out after three years. So it kind of puts the county in a, a good situation where, where we know, we know the consistent pricing, but if the contractor's not performing, we have the ability to go out and do a, a new RFP.
Great.
Well, I could say by looking at the numbers, the person evaluating position number one really felt TriStar was a lot better. So I'm, I'm going, the, the point spread there is rather significant. So, you know, that's good to see that all three rate, people rated it number one to maintain.
Yes, it was consistent.
Yes, very consistent. So is there any further discussion?
I have a question that, not necessarily about this contract, but just a general workers' comp question. In, so we average something in the range of 50 claims per year. In the last two years, can you give me a sense of how many of those were COVID-related workers' comp claims?
A total of about four.
And do you have a range of kind of, or a ballpark estimate of, like, what, what kind of costs might be, might be associated with those claims?
Not off the top of my head. Two of the claims were just individuals who had to quarantine after an exposure. So the claim covered 10 to 14 days of time loss benefits for those individuals. Two of those claims were long COVID claims. These individuals were off of work for six to nine months, incurring time loss benefits. One involved a hospitalization. So that one is probably a five-figure claim.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Well, with that, I'll move chair signature of intent to award workers' compensation third-party administrator contract to TriStar.
Second.
Okay, so any further discussion? Mr. DeBon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And thank you for all your work putting this together, Sarah.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will be happy to sign the letter. We do have, on our agenda now, other items. I believe we have a letter from Jen Patterson. Jen, would you like to?
Just come drop off a new one. There's been a couple of dates.
I haven't laid this one. Yep.
Thank you. Jen Patterson, Strategic Initiatives Manager for Deschutes County.
Good morning. Thank you, Jen, for joining us.
Good morning.
And thank you for joining the county.
Pleasure to be here. Happy to be here.
Thanks.
Jen, would you like to provide a brief overview of the letter the board's considering today?
Sure. Commissioner Chang requested a thank you for your service letter for Kelly Sparks. Kelly Sparks worked for Oregon State University Cascades, and she is leaving that position to take a position at the University of Maine. And she has worked with the county on, I think, a couple of different aspects, but regarding the Child Care Coalition. And so we wrote a letter and, a thank you letter to, for her service.
Great. Yeah, I want to, special thanks to Kelly Sparks. She's been a partner through, you know, the idea of a campus, which was hosted at COCC originally, and then, then the opportunity to redevelop and site it here in central Oregon. Redeveloping an existing landfill for, for a campus is pretty exciting, and it's really happening. So thank you very much for taking time to, you know, ask for this letter so we can acknowledge her contributions.
Yeah. And I, I, I really liked the content of this letter. I, I guess my only question would be, you know, given that we interacted, the county interacted so much with Kelly on the, on the demolition landfill site, you know, to, to create space for this, this growing new campus, do we want to say more in that second paragraph about that partnership or leave it the way it is?
It seems like it's implied, from growing the university from a few buildings to a thriving campus.
Well, it may be fun to, you know, acknowledge it specifically, just because it's such a unique thing around the country, even redeveloping an existing known landfill that was repurposed. So there could be a, just a simple statement in there.
Yeah. Or, or talking about the working relationship between the county and, and the university on that, on that location, because it was our land. And that was, that was the period before I was, I was a commissioner, so I can't comment in detail about all the, all the interactions. But if, if that, if that partnership was something that we wanted to play up, I-
Well, yeah, in the end, it was always about the what-ifs. You know, how far do you take the what-ifs when you dig into a landfill? And so it took a while to get that closed up and get all the paperwork. And thank you for our legal team for helping us with that. It was quite a process, but it's exciting. It has been redeveloped. So as I say, I'll support the letter and, you know, another sentence or so about redevelopment of that landfill.
Okay. So Jen, do you want to do another revision then?
Well, just add words. But so I'll move approval of the letter.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
With edits as discussed.
Okay, good, all right. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Great, so thank you very much. Do we have any other items?
I'll be attending the Redmond Economic Development Strategic Planning Session this afternoon. So, it's the Ready Board Leadership Getting Together, just kind of taking a moment, looking at the big picture. You know, what, you know, the world's a big change in place right now, so what is, what are some good priorities for Ready? And, you know, our partnership with Ready and then the east side of the town, there's, you know, capital investment being kicked off out there, and then our dispersed camping issues and, Core Three is located out there. So, as I say, the east side of Redmond will be discussed, I'm sure, a little bit today.
Right.
One, one thing that I'm particularly seeing our AOC colleagues reminds me of is that next week, is it next week? Next week, there'll be a meeting, an AOC meeting relating to the reconstitution of the Local Government Advisory Committee to work with OHA and the state. And I, the, a big part of the focus is going to be kind of working with the aid and assists population. And when I saw that, I mentioned it to Janice Garso, our incoming Health Services Director, current Behavioral Health Director. I would be, I would like for Janice to tune in for that meeting virtually and track the discussion so that she can help advise us as we go into the legislative session and we're talking about. I'm guessing that with that, that court decision about the state hospital, that there's going to hopefully be some problem-solving work in the legislature around that issue this coming session. So, it'd be great to have, in my mind, it'd be great to have Janice up to speed on some of these high-level state-county negotiations and the policy debate.
Well, and along those lines, for her to be the health administrator, so we want to empower her to get things done. I wouldn't ask her directly to go to a meeting because it will figure out all the things she needs to do as the new director. But, you know, putting it in the policy portfolio, making sure somebody's following it, you know, taking a position at Dushuts County, I can support all that for sure.
Yeah, now, I mentioned the meeting to her, and she said, she expressed an interest in...
Yeah, but I would say, if she had somebody else attended for her, that'd be okay too, is what I'm saying. Yep.
It does. Anything else? And we actually did have a fire waste meeting yesterday morning in person. Thank you, Tino, and Garby for chairing that meeting. I know we are looking for our next forester to run that program, but it was, it was well-attended and appreciate all the work that the county has done the last four years. The fact that we've gone up to almost 70 fire waste communities is really significant. Several people that were new fire waste committee communities were attending in person. And then I did hear the story about someone who's bringing in 150 goats to clean up. And she's going to send me the literature, the contact information for that man. He runs a herd of 600 goats, but they do an unbelievable job. And they're looking forward to seeing how that works cleanup, I believe about 10 acres in their homeowner's neighborhood. So, yes, goats are coming.
How do you pin in acreage for goats? Do you have a feel for that?
Yeah, oh, I've seen it done, yes. They used to do it into pankakeang all the time. No, they don't even have to use hot wire, they just use like wire and, you know, they really, they do a great job. And they clean it all up, so it's, it's pretty amazing.
That may be a good information.
And you have really good dogs that you work with, you know, probably, you know, the border collie, that makes sense.
Well, we've got a couple of goats that probably should be out in the middle of our
Yes, doing so.
But we, yeah, we have them in a pen, so...
Yeah, no, or they'll go through the fence and then they'll be gone. So, anyway, no, but that was kind of, it's fun to think that they're bringing up 150 goats.
Along the lines of, you know, defensible space and fire. It was raining pretty hard at my house this morning, so just south of town, it stopped. You know, you can see it's wet here, but it was raining this morning, so hopefully the fire got lots of true water this morning.
And then the other side of the story is all the people that had cut their hay.
Oh, I know.
So, their hay got rained on, you can flip it once, but then when you go to flip it again, yeah, it starts to lose its quality. So, it's been one of those challenging years.
We have water coming though, that's a good...
I know, I know, but it's like, my neighbors worked so hard, and they had just cut a field, and I just, you know, the, you know, the fertilizer doubled, the weather's kind of been interesting. It took forever for us to do the first cutting this year. You know, summer was a long time in coming, and now, yeah, the last, the last crop of the season, I don't think it's looking very good, so...
So, one other item, LCDC is meeting in John Day on Friday, maybe Thursday and Friday. And I haven't really looked for where there's an optimal time to be there, but I may be interested in attending that instead of going to the AOC District Two meeting. So, any thoughts along those lines? As I say, I haven't looked at the LCD scheduled to know when it'd be optimal to be there.
I know, it's, well, Nick, what, was flying home from Ohio, and then he's going to John Day. So, yeah, I know, that would be good.
So, I'm offering to do that, I'll look...
I'll be at the AOC District meeting.
Okay, yeah, so as I say, I'm just, I'll let you know that that'll be the plan. I'll look for an optimal time, either Thursday afternoon or Friday, and I'll have to do my homework on it. But I know that there's all kinds of land use, you know, fire map is probably going to be discussed, or byproducts of it, or whatever. So, as I say, I'll look for an opportunity, time to be there. So, then I won't be in Madras on Friday. I've been on the Committee for the Bylaws, talking about, you know, substantive, and I think I mentioned this previously, is our election process, signing up at least two days before letting AOC know you're interested in running for the positions that get voted on in November. So, that's a substantive change proposal in the bylaws. In fact, if you want to give us an update on that, how does that procedure work? Because that'll be a vote of the body of AOC in November, because it's not adopted until it's adopted. Can you help with that, Gina? Please join us. So, it's a bylaw proposal, change proposal.
Do you like to join me, Mallory? I just suspect they might have other questions.
Now that we're going to, yeah, say hi, yep.
Yes. Hi, thank you. So, how that would work is that it would come before the full Board of Directors for a vote at our November meeting. And that particularly one is to move a nomination from the floor at our meeting on Thursday to 48 hours before, that the President needs to be advised who is running for office. So, the whole membership knows that and can have discussions before nominations from the floor.
So, that'll happen at the annual meeting? A board meeting at the annual meeting?
That will happen, so it won't apply to this year.
Yeah, that was kind of my question.
Yes, absolutely, it won't apply to this year, but if it, if it's voted on at the annual meeting, then it'll apply for here on out.
And there'll be a lot of focus at this meeting anyways, so...
Yes.
Yeah, understood.
Yes.
Good. So, that'll be shared at the AOC District Meeting, so everybody hears about it around the state for discussion at the annual meeting. Well, and then you're here for just sit-downs with the Commissioners, the making your way around the state. I was able to meet with you for about 45 minutes this morning, so it was great to see you. And then I think there's a proposal that maybe you move the meetings around, since our meeting only lasted 35 minutes this morning.
It's not over yet. Remember? I know.
It's not over till it's over.
Right.
But I was just leaving the opportunity open, you know, because you mentioned it.
You mean, they may want to go somewhere else.
We, we will be meeting with your Planning Director and Roads Department today, but our, our time is flexible. So, we have to go to Condon this afternoon. But whenever you can meet with us, I know we have set times, but if you need to move those around earlier, depending on the length of this meeting, we're open to that.
Okay, great. So, you're saying that Chris Doty and Peter are probably a little more flexible?
Well...
With meeting you today, or have you already set up? Are you meeting with them this morning?
I was going to meet with Peter after this.
Okay.
And then we'll be flexible with Chris Doty, yes.
Okay, good. Sounds like a plan.
So, just, just a trigger for me, I was able to drive from here to Pendleton, and we saw you guys at the Pendleton events this last weekend. And I'm driving a Tesla, so a brand-name electric car, but there's a new charger in Boardman and a new charger in Madras, and man, did that make my trip nice? Because I, there was no need to worry about calculating distance. So, when you say, talk about going to Condon, you know, that would probably empower me to zigzag, you know, through that diagonal, instead of worrying about staying on the main roads even. So, the world is changing quickly for electric vehicles, too.
Oh, and besides, I did meet with Cheyenne, our new Executive Director for their, our homeless project in Dushuts County yesterday afternoon, and we had about an hour meeting. I'm so glad that she's here, I think she's, really brings a wealth of knowledge to what she has done across the state of California. And she also raises cows, which is amazing. She raises cows, and she was named after Cheyenne Wyoming. So, it was, it was a really welcoming and great conversation, how she's going to be a part of our team to help us get ahead with, you know, our homeless numbers and where, where we can make differences in a compassionate way, but actually make difference. So, she's, brings a wealth of knowledge, and it was great to meet with her. So, we have no executive items, is there anyone? Whitney, did you have anything you wanted to bring up today?
Nothing else, thank you.
Kim? Now you're done?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So, then I believe our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Eric, back there?
9:37, only two more minutes.
Well, who could have guessed?